Hello, it's nice to see so many guests here. And I'd like to welcome you to the Board of Trustees meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And this is November 28th of 2023, 7 o'clock. So Paula, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Fay.
Here.
Trustee Cobb.
Here.
Trustee Hilton-Hinga.
Here.
Trustee DeCretzi.
Here.
Trustee Rice.
Here.
Trustee World.
Here.
And trustee Swisher.
Here.
Just join me in the pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America, for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustees, you have before you an agenda for tonight. Please let me know if there are any changes that should be made to the agenda. If there are none, then like a motion to approve the agenda. Thank you. So that's Latretti and Rowan. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Agenda is adopted. And then as part of your packet, you have the consent agenda. It involves various minutes from advisory boards and our minutes from our last meeting, the town clerk report, and resolution in regard to Creston LLC and an appointment to the Trails Advisory Board of Randy Patterson and Jason Meyer as regular voting members. Are there any items that you see in the consent agenda that you'd rather have as business items? Are there any other changes to the consent agenda? Is there a motion to accept it? I think Latretti and Swisher. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Now we're at the part of our meeting called public comment. Anyone is free to, who are assigned in on the floor, is free to come before us and make a statement of up to three minutes. Okay, great. Eric, would you like to start out? Your topic is different from the others.
Certainly. Thank you for hearing me. My name is Eric Give, 230 North Gunnison Avenue, Buena Vista, Colorado. Today I represent the Optimist Club. I am the vice president and Dan Johansson is here as the president of the Optimist Club. I hope you guys are familiar with us, at least for our pancakes, if nothing else. We're, I think, the largest community group for charitable organizations in the town. And we do a number of activities besides the pancake breakfast. We do golf tournaments, we do runs. All of the money that we raise in the community goes to the community. And our main focus is kids in the community. We donate $15,000 a year to scholarships at the high school. And we also get involved in municipal projects. I think within your packet, there's a sheet of ours about some of the things we've done in the past. We've been the primary focus of building the splash park in town. We've been a large part of the skateboard park. We've dissipated in the river park. And so we're pumping money back into the community. We understand that the town needs to control its public spaces by fees, not only to generate the revenue necessary to keep those spaces well maintained, but also to focus groups and make sure that they have reasonable reasons for being in those spaces. But we'd like you guys to consider us as perhaps a special case. We put in $2,000 in fees last year for all of our activities in parks in town. None of our activities overlap with any other activities. We're not in the way of any other groups that would like to be in those areas. We're not in the way of groups that would generate revenue for you. And again, all of the money that we generate in the community goes directly back into the kids and into the public works within Buena Vista. So as part of your budget process, if you could consider, I think later in the agenda, you guys are considering fees. And certainly fees include park fees and community center fees. And if you could see it clearly to give us some dispensation when it comes to those fees, we will take that extra $2,000 that we would get from not paying those fees this year and pump them back into the community directly. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. And Adam Nelson, would you approach the podium, please, and give your name and address for the record?
Hello. I'm Adam Nelson and I live in Maythor. I'm actually here representing this lot of the show. And I'm here because one of the items, agenda items, would be the Sportsman's Club, our lease agreement. We're just here to show support for the Sportsman's Club and to tell you that it's actually one of the avenues that we've been supporting in regards to the kids' trap team for the high school. And they've been the collaborator, I guess you could say, in regards to having a sport for kids that maybe don't do the normal football, soccer, baseball stuff. So we're just here just to show support and hope that you do consider that as one of the things. Thank you.
And Jake Farber. Give your name and address for the record.
My name is Jake Farber. I live at 40677 North Highway 24, Buena Vista. I am the Buena Vista High School trap coach, head coach. We have, with our venue at the Sportsman's Club, we are able to take the high school team from a in the last position to first place position in the state of Colorado, 401A. The Sportsman's Club is an integral part of our our activity. And we teach more than shooting. We teach respect, responsibility, ethics, and overall need for a place to a place to put our work together. Part of our program is USA Clay Targets. USA Clay Targets has been in business now for 21, 24 years. They are, they tout the idea that they are the safest high school sport, period. They've not had one incident or accident, not in the, with the participants or in with the observers. I've got some of these I'd like to hand out to you here as well. Couple of things that USA Clay does in the high school venue is that they can have a 98-pounder competing against a 250-pounder, whether it be male or female, in the same, in the same sporting event. Now, we can, we do coed, we do handicap, we do that kind of thing. And we need a place to do that. And Buena Vista Sportsman's Club and the least that the town has who does with is is essential to our program with the high school. Again, if any questions, I would be more than glad to answer those questions. But right now I will take this time to hand out some other handles, some handbills. One of the other things we do is CPW, Colorado Parks and Wildlife. We do hunter ed classes at the Sportsman's Club when other things are not going on there. So we'd like to be considered for the lease.
Thank you. Could we have Greg Newton up, please?
My name is Greg Newton, 490, Happy Dad Drive, Buena Vista. Jake's part is all about the future. He failed to mention that one of his shooters, Bussin Martinez, who's going to be a senior, led the league in average and also has already visited his second college for a potential scholarship in shooting. Shooting in high schools and colleges is an upcoming thing. Jake also didn't really harp on the fact of how he coaches these kids. It's all about safety, discipline, and dedication. And he talks to them all the time about whether you continue on this with this sport for years to come or not, which you can. It's a sport. You can play football all your life. But I do a lot of trap shooting. It's something you can, you know, it's a gentleman's sport and it's something you can do as long as you can afford to. It's kind of expensive. So he's talking about the future. I just wanted, we've got this picture. I want to pass around, it's probably like 1902 of the Buena Vista Sportsman's Club. You can tell by their attire and their weapons. It was in the big silver era, 1880 or whatever. Tried to do some research, really can't get any details about what it was like back then. Over the years, the club, oh, by the way, I'm the secretary and trap chairman of the club. Over the years, the club's had its ups and downs, but it's really at an up now. Two years ago, we had 108 members. We now have 210. We shoot trap a couple of times a week. We also host groups like Young Life. They had 32 shooters come on a Saturday this fall. They had 75 last spring. It's something they really count on. It's a big deal for them. And we go there and talk about safety and make sure everybody's having fun. So we also have sponsored this year four kids, three of which came from Jake's team, to attend a two-week NRA camp at the Whittington Center in Rattler, Mexico. $1,300 each. We have community sponsors, the likes of Trap Creek Plumbing, APA, High Country Bank, Comfort Gas, STCEA, Allen Excavating, that have donated the money to send these kids to what, for these kids, will be a remarkable, possibly life-changing experience. Not everybody's into shooting guns, but hunting is a large heritage here. And the kids that are involved, I think Jake had 22 kids in his spring team. They just love it and they're very polite. It's yes sir, no sir. Everybody waits your turn. There's no, there's nothing negative that happens. It's all very positive. So I, for me, I might have to move if we don't get this because I wouldn't know what I would do. But anyway, hopefully you'll get, and I believe the first lease that I've seen was in 1964. They renew it every 10 years. And that's where we are today, asking for renewal. Was it when May 15th or February this year? May is when the renewal date is up. So we're asking for positive consideration for at least another 10 years, if maybe not two or more extensions. Any questions, Hary?
No, we don't, we don't have any questions right now.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. And the last speaker on the Sportsman's Club is Rex Roberson. Would please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Rex Roberson, 300966, North Inner Circle, BV. I am the owner of Roberson Firearms Training and also the current pistol chairman for the Sportsman's Club and also hoping to be the president of the club next year. So Jake and Greg do a really great job with our shotgun program. My wife and I focus on teaching kids and adults, specifically ladies, how to safely handle pistols and shoot pistols accurately. And also do consent carry permit classes. And it's all done out of the Sportsman's Club clubhouse, which is on the property that we're looking at renewals. So I feel like we've, we've done a really good job maintaining the property and representing the community, trying to really share our passion with guns and also the safety of, and responsibility around owning and using. So again, as they've said, please consider our lease renewal for another 10 years and we appreciate your support.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate your, your coming to speak with us and you're welcome anytime. So that concludes the public comment portion. Oh, is there one?
No, one on one.
Sorry. Sandy Long. Oh, Sandy.
Hello, this is Sandy.
Name and your address for the record.
Okay, Sandy Long, 30349 Aspen Turn, Buena Vista. And I want to thank the mayor and trustees and city employees for all your service to this community. Just a quick announcement that Mount Princeton Geothermal LLC, that's Hank Held and Fred Henderson, they're holding a community meeting to present their plans for geothermal energy and to answer community questions. And that meeting will be this Thursday, November 30th, at 5:30 to 7 o'clock PM in the BV Community Center, the room that you're in right now. So any questions, let me know. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Sandy. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
That does not look like anybody else has their hand raised.
So that concludes our public comment. So now we'll go with our presentation from the Chaffey County Fire Protection District update. Taking fire.
Chief's report came out with the original board packet, so it's a little dated now. We're going through, they had 19 applicants for hiring of a new chief at the beginning of the month. They whittled it down to seven who meet all of the qualifications that the fire district put forth, which was pretty extensive certifications that they were looking for. We hope to have a new chief hired in place mid-January, February at the very latest. So as soon as we have some information, we'll be happy to share that with the town. We've been really active lately when the community assisting with a bunch of the events that occurred over Halloween. We're looking forward to the parade of lights on Saturday with Santa and delivering Santa for that. We have been doing some training with the Buena Vista Police Department, GP County Sheriff's Department, to make sure that we, along with EMS and Salida Fire, are prepared for any active shooter that may or may not happen in any area, both here and Salida. The collaboration between the agencies is really needed. We're all speaking the same language and we can all expect the same thing from one another, to show up, because we're all going to be there if an unfortunate event happens. So it's really nice to have the wonderful new police station. The, the room that we met in was amazing to be able to host everybody in, so thank you guys for that. One of the things I wanted to explain on the Fire Marshal was the completed inspections versus the building associated. What that means is that one building, for example, like Buena Vista Square, has several occupancies in not one building. So that's something that will be a little bit different in the report that you guys receive. Buildings might be different. Or if, like, the Heritage Museum owns multiple buildings, that's one occupancy and then there's different buildings associated with that. So if you have any questions, Paula has my information. Please feel free to reach out about any of the inspection things. We are moving forward with some alarm reviews for busy bees to make sure they're into their new facility. Main Street and some of the projects there for the fire suppression system and reviews are moving forward finally. Planning department's been great. The STR, short-term rental market is increasing. I will be probably working with Lillian in the future. We would like to strongly recommend re-inspections with renewals for short-term rentals. Currently, right now, the town operates on a you complete your own inspection and we trust that everything is the way that it was when the fire district came out and did the initial inspections. Yes, there would be nominal fee associated with that, but we would really strongly encourage annual inspections for short-term rentals, just to make sure that, again, the extinguishers are in functioning order, the smoke alarms and CO detectors are still there, that they don't have things blocking doors, as well as this helps us to not have false alarms when people need to change their smoke detector batteries. Us going and activating them can sometimes bring out those low alarm batteries prior to any activations that may occur. And then we are, it also enables us to have some conversations with property owners about if you have a Knox box or I realize that they're expensive, but we don't have any other way to access buildings other than to break a door in these instances. And so either the community will call us or alarms are going off and we really try not to if there's nothing showing, to not break the doors, but it allows us to have some further communication and reiterate the need for access into these short-term rentals for the fire district. This is continuing a conversation that we have with the businesses in town to, we need access to your business if something happens after hours. So it's something that we are strongly encouraging the businesses. It's not a requirement, but we are strongly encouraging the businesses to look for a Knox box and not just hope that Salida Dispatch puts the code in the appropriate place for the appropriate business. This enables us to only have access for the fire department to the building. So that's really important when we're talking security for banks and other entities around here. So it's a new requirement for any new commercial build. They have to have a Knox box, but trying to get some of the older businesses and things to come together and understand, like, a Knox box, it's $200 or $300. Yes, sounds like it's expensive, but replacing your door, especially it's a full paint glass door, is significantly more. So I believe, talking with Pat Green, the last thing that I have is that the town is looking to adopt the 2021 code series, including the fire code, in mid-December. Around December 12th is when the county is looking to do it with implementation of February 1st. So if planning or any of the board has any questions about the fire code specifically, please feel free to reach out to me. Brian and I have also been working, and I believe it's going to be upcoming next month, to bring the burn ordinance for the town of Buena Vista in line with the county burden ordinance, so that there's no confusion about when you can burn, what you can burn, the size of things you can burn. And that, because we're, we're the ones who have been in charge of issuing burn permits and there's a little ambiguity between what we require in the county and what's allowed in town. And so just cleaning all that up, I believe that Brian has a plan to present that to you guys the next time. Yeah. Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to ask you, are you recommending the reinspection of STRs on renewal throughout the county or is it already exists in some places? So the county, the municipalities that we manage short terminals for are the town of Poncha and the town of Buena Vista. The county has a little bit of a hit and miss in terms of whether or not they have somebody come out on a reinspection. I believe Brandon Wolf is the one with the county planning department that's managing that. And sometimes he does it and sometimes he doesn't. Their in-person inspections are much more critical in terms of they're looking for egress windows and some of these other things that are not on the list. It's not to say that we don't think that they're important, but they're not things that both the town of Buena Vista and the town of Poncha have deemed criteria for issuing a short-term rental license. We have a lot of short terminals around here and just trying to make sure that the people who are staying in them are continuing to be safe is really kind of our goal to maintain that. So I know that the county requires a self-evaluation form every year when they apply for that. I know that that's what the town has as well, but we would just like to maybe try to look towards moving towards that. The county has reached out to us and asked us to take on their short-term rental inspections. That's just much more than my department can handle right now. And so we said, thank you, but no thank you at this time. We would ask the same of them if we were servicing our short-term rentals too. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Karen.
So that may be something that we'll address in the trustee interaction later in our meetings. Okay, now we have the reopening of the public hearing with regard to the budget for 2024. And as part of that, Do you want to start that out and then, and then we'll have Betsy or we'll just start with Betsy?
I'd be fine if Betsy starts.
Okay.
Is that okay?
We have Betsy Difenver with us. Chaffey County Community Foundation.
Good evening, trustees and Mayor Fay. Thank you so much for having us here. And thank you for your consideration of the continued partnership that we have with the Community Foundation. Oh, I'm sorry. Am I supposed to say my name and address?
We know who you are. I don't think so. Does she, Paula?
No, she doesn't.
Okay.
Thank you for the continued partnership. It's really been a pleasure to be able to review the nonprofit applications and work with a review committee to make those decisions of how to award those funds in a equitable and really evaluative way, so that we're really funding high-impact projects and stewarding the resource from town to invest in organizations that are serving the local community. So we are requesting $59,000 in funding for the 2024 community grants. And of that, that would be available, $5,640 for a competitive community grants program. You know, we hear from a lot of different nonprofit organizations. different nonprofit organizations about the impact the grants program has on them. And no, I can't share all those stories today. I think it is just notable that you were able to fund um 31 applicants in this past round, this past year. And the average grant award was around um $1,800. Um, and it's also, we hear great feedback from the nonprofit partners that they're able to submit one application to be eligible for both town and city funding um instead of submitting two applications for two very similar processes. Um, and it allows the review committee to, to review those. Um, although we do, we're very careful to allocate based on the population served as far as where the funding comes from. So organizations that aren't serving a BV population are not getting BV funds. So thank you for your consideration and including that in the budget again this year.
Thank you. And we pay you a little management fee for that. We're taking care of that for us.
Yeah, the um admin fee is set at 4% um currently. And that doesn't fully cover the staff time that we have in administering that. Um, but it does make us a little bit more whole so that we can continue to be a strong partner in this.
And you've developed a nice um, a nice way of evaluating the different applications and allocating the funds. I think it's working very well myself.
And thank you for trustee cap for your participation this year on the committee.
Enjoyed it. Thank you.
Well, any other questions for Betsy?
John.
Thanks.
Thanks.
And I, I guess I would say, Phillip, I see that this is already in the budget, correct?
That's correct. Under public support.
Yeah.
So now we'll carry on with the public hearing. Okay, this public hearing is for the 2024 budget. And is being conducted in person and via Zoom. The hearing will be conducted as follows. Number one, town staff will present an update on the 2024 draft budget. Number two, I will then call for public comment. Each member of the public who wishes to speak may do so, but must direct all questions to the board. Each member of the public wishing to speak will be given one opportunity to speak for three minutes. The public will generally not be provided further time to comment. Zoom has an area where you can raise a hand to speak that can be found by moving the cursor to the bottom of the Zoom window. Please use this function if you wish to speak and I will acknowledge you when it's your turn. Um, three, the board may ask questions of the public or staff at any time during the hearing. Four, once there is no further public comment, the public hearing will be closed. So this is a continuation of, of the previous um public hearings for the budget. So um now Phillip, would you like to?
Thank you, mayor.
Stan?
So my summary memo starts on page 60 of your packet. And um I'll hit some of the highlights and may kind of point out what's left, I guess, um to finish off the budget from staff perspective and then I'm happy to take any questions or discussion from the board after that. I guess first, starting with process, though, um, this is a continuation of the public hearings. Um, or the public hearing for the budget. Uh, we're really looking to conclude um priorities tonight so that we can draft all the documents for the next meeting, which will be when the board will consider adopting the budget, approving and adopting the budget. So um, yeah, we'd really like to make sure I capture any changes, adjustments the board wants to see tonight so that we have everything ready next meeting. Uh, so back on page 60, uh, things that have happened since the previous meeting. Uh, one, we did get um all of our September sales tax actuals and um since the last meeting and that um, that's detailed a bit more under the treasurer report later tonight. But where that puts us is uh 4% uh increase year-to-date um over 2022. And if you'll remember, when we kicked off budget, we were looking at just under 7% increase year-to-year. So August and September, the combination of those, uh, we saw flattening and a bit of a decrease in August. So that, that ripple effect did reduce our revenue projections for next year, which we have discussed. But if you have any questions around that, I'm happy to um, dig into that a little bit with you. Uh, but we did, we were able to offset that reduction of revenue from, from a few different things. One, uh, our workers' compensation insurance actually came in a bit lower than we had anticipated, which is, which is great. I mean, it's our staff's behaving and
Good job.
They've done a good job over the last three years. So our rates decreased there. That was a huge help. We did make some changes um after the last discussion for the community center project. It was focused on the opinion room. That uh, uh, with Shane and his team is now morphed into uh community center uh, door replacements and ADA door openers. So uh, that placeholder has been increased from 25,000 to 30,000 in the capital project, our started capital plan. And really it's a placeholder at this time because Shane and his team have to get bids and, and really find out what it's gonna take to, to make that work well. So that's, that's a, a, a change on the capital side of things. Um, we, we were able to reduce a little bit of our operating expenses on our wages and benefits. We, we had some um new hires within planning and uh the rec- recreation departments. So now we have actuals uh for those positions and, and that was a little bit lower than what we had budgeted for. So with that said, we were able to also increase our transfer from the general fund to the capital fund. And you will see on the capital uh project list, that helps cover everything that's in that list. So that's, that's good news. So right, right as the budget's drafted now, there is a surplus, a little tiny surplus in the general fund of just over a thousand dollars. Um, and all of the funds are uh are balanced uh except for the ones that we have planned to spend in the fund balance, a little bit of capital improvement uh fund and street fund. Um, jumping down or going down to the next part, the public requests and proposals that have come up uh to the board. Pretty much everything has been accounted for or integrated into the budget. Um, I will highlight again that the BV Heritage request uh per direction from the board, uh, that's been directed to our community grant program. So that's how that is being considered at the moment. It is not a separate line item, but certainly could be an application into the community grant process. Uh, the one item that is not in the budget yet is the request from BV Strong to increase their allocation from 3,000 to 4,500. And I would say that that's really the, the main one that I'll take direction from the board, your desires with that. Uh, if you want to increase that per their request or something else, you can use that $1,000 surplus. And then uh I would advise that we look at our uh recycling uh program allocation for the additional $500 to make that, if you wanted to, to up that to $4,500. That recycling program is essentially a placeholder at this point. Knowing that the town has prioritized recycling program and, and working with the county over the last few years, we don't know what the county project is going to entail um in terms of town participation. So we've just held that as a placeholder until we know more. But I think it would be very reasonable to take from that if you did want to fund the BV Strong fully. If there's any other ideas that the board has to pull from, certainly open to that as well. Uh, so we can talk about that. Uh, other than that, if you look through all the capital projects, everything is above the red line, meaning it is included in the budget. And uh no changes on our planning projects. So I think that finishes my summary uh from meeting to meeting.
Okay.
Oh, Gina, did you have something?
Well, uh, the Arizona Bridge project. So that's still in there, but we decide that that wasn't, or wasn't going to move forward. So if that's, you know, some of the monies that was grant funded, so um I didn't know if there's anything there that we could play with that could help out with BV Strong at all.
Uh, it's, it's a good question. If you look at page 63, um, that's where the, that project is uh, it's third priority on that list, down on that list. Uh, 1.2 million, you'll see that uh 315,000 and change is coming from fund balance. There's nothing coming from our general fund transfer. And something like BV Strong is a kind of an ongoing request. I would consider it operating. And so I don't think taking savings from fund balance and allocating it to it is as clean.
Right.
Um, but that would be a consideration uh with that if that project completely goes away. Then our fund balance will uh essentially go back up that $315,000 that the board could consider for other capital projects. Does that?
Yeah, no, it's helpful. Wouldn't, yeah, it's not the right bucket necessarily. And um, yeah, and then I guess, I guess we did give direction, see what other options there might be for the bridge, but anyhow, but it's like, well, if there's some wiggle room, just in case. So I would love to see BV Strong get funding. I mean, it's one thing for sure that a majority of citizens actually take part in here. They actually get to use some of these other things they might not all actually utilize. So I think that's important to, if we can get it on the list because it's something I think most people are excited for and.
Would you like to make a motion about that?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, um, I guess then my motion would be I'd like to make a motion to make sure full funding for the BV Strong event is added to the 2024 um budget.
Okay, and what's it gonna come from?
Well, that's where I, I, I'm not quite sure. So I'm trying to work with to find it.
I can, I mean, I've, I'm happy to make that just based on what Phillip says, just
Okay.
Um, just I moved that we take a thousand dollars from the general fund and 500 from the recycling fund to fulfill the full request for the uh BV Strong dinner.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Second.
Guys, we have Cobb and the Kretzy. Do we need to read that back or anything?
Discussion or?
I'm gonna just say what I took Sue has said that to go ahead and fund it for $1,500, $1,000 coming from general fund, $500 coming from recycling.
I think correct.
Increase it by 1,500. That's correct.
Is there further discussion?
You know, I'm all in paper at that, but I do have one question.
Okay.
Could they qualify for money from the community foundation?
They don't know their nonprofit status, so I, I don't know for sure. When I was on that tour, we were working towards it, but I don't know for sure. Something we could recommend. I, Betsy, do you?
Can I comment?
Please.
Um, I'm not, I don't know. I haven't looked into them specifically, but they could always get a fiscal sponsor that would be willing set the ground on their behalf to fund their project. This is charitable in nature.
Okay, all right. Um, um, is there any further discussion? Uh, there's a motion on the table and it's been properly seconded. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Your motion passes. Are there other issues with regard to the budget?
Not from staff. So anything from the board?
I guess I'd just like to say thank you, Phillip, for um you and your team, the whole town team probably um for just uh taking what was kind of a lot of up in the air things from the last meeting and bringing it back and setting the table so well for us to um, make decisions. So thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. Okay, um, so now um we can open the uh meeting to the public. Are there any public comments? Any comments from the public? And is there anyone on Zoom?
Somebody else's hand raised?
Okay. Hearing no comments from the public, I will close that portion of the meeting. And um so I think that we are at the point where we can ask you to go ahead and draft the documents that you need for next, the next meeting.
Yes.
It'll be the last meeting. Um, the budget.
That's right. So all we need now is a motion to continue the public hearing because it will be a public hearing at the next one as well.
Okay. Is there a motion to continue the public hearing to December 12th? Is that moved?
I'll sub second.
Yes, we have Cobb and Roe. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes. So we are uh continuing the hearing until December 12th. Thank you all very much. Okay, so now um, we have the introduction and first reading of the building code ordinance. And I assume that this is what I read, right? That's right here?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. So the question is, should the Board of Trustees approve the adoption of ordinance number 20, series 2023? And ordinance of the town of Beano Vista, Colorado repealing and reenacting articles 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, um 10, 6, or sorry, sorry, 15, 16, 18, and 19 of the Beano Vista Municipal Code to adopt by reference the 2021 International Building Code, 2021 um in- international residential code, 2020 National Electric Code, 2021 International Mechanical Code, 2021 International Plumbing Code, 2021 International Energy Conservation Code, 2021 International Fire Code, 2021 International Fuel Gas Code, 2021 International Existing Building Code, 2021 International Property Maintenance Code, and 2021 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code. And amending chapter 18 of the Beano Vista Municipal Code by the addition of new article 18 to adopt by reference the 2023 Colorado Model Electric Ready and Solar Ready Code.
I can guarantee that's probably the longest title of ordinance you'll ever have to read.
Thank you. Wow. All right. Um, so should the Board of Trustees approve this? I need a motion and a second. Uh, or comments or changes or?
Mayor, there's actually, if I may, there's a um two kind of processes. In addition, we had the, the presentation uh November 14th from Pat Green from the uh, the county, Chief of County Health and Safety Department. After that presentation, then we have, we have two readings. Um, so the first reading is tonight, which is simply an introduction of the ordinance via ordinance number 20, um, which we've done and you've read. Um, and then the trustees need to schedule a public hearing on the ordinance.
Okay.
And so that, the recommendation would be to schedule that on December 12th and that would happen via motion um to schedule a second hearing. We published this in the newspaper of general circulation, JV County Times. Um, 15 days uh before the hearing and then again eight days before the hearing. So I think it's already um, probably in the paper now. It's a, you get to publish all 35 pages of the uh ordinance. So um, which is pretty exciting. For all the JV County Times readers out there.
Yeah.
Anyway, so the, that's, the process is, is um, it's a, a state mandate that Jeff can explain. Anyway, so that, that's, the process is, is, um, it's a, a state mandate that Jeff can explain more if you'd like, but there's two readings. Today is basically an introduction to it and setting a hearing date for, again, uh, we recommend December twelfth.
Right, so we're really looking for a motion to, to set the hearing date.
Yeah, motion to set the, uh, public hearing on December twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, to consider the adoption of ordinance number twenty as, as, uh, read.
Yeah, I mean, the town's ordinances are typically, is a such a great town, your normal ordinances get, uh, adopted on one reading. And they're effective thirty days after publication. When you adopt codes by reference versus your, everything's in the ordinance, this is just basically. Despite the law name, it's just listing a bunch of other codes that are being referred to. There's a special process in the statute that requires that you do. Uh, two readings. That's why it's being done this way.
Thank you. Well, is there a motion?
I would like to make that motion for what Joel Benson's. Tell me where to read.
Hearing December twelfth.
Yes.
Right.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Cindy Swisher and, uh, second by Sue Cobb. Um, to schedule the public hearing for December twelfth. Of twenty twenty-three. Is there any further discussion? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And the motion passes. And, um, we have that one, okay? Did we give you enough on that, Paula? Okay, good, right, great. So now we're going to talk about the, um, Sportsman Club ground lease agreement. They have a renewal request. Um, the current lease expires in twenty twenty-four. Um, but, um, uh, we're ready to talk about it tonight. Brian, are you?
Uh, yeah, to a certain extent, um, the public comment provided a lot of good background that I didn't even know. I tried to. Research it a bit. Um, this current lease is written, it was executed in May twenty fourteen. Expires the initial term in May of twenty twenty-four. It's got an initial renewal period for an additional ten years. And then two additional, uh, optional ten-year, uh, renewal periods associated with it. Part of the agreement kind of lines out what the request for renewal looks like, what the review for consideration for renewal looks like. Um, so it provides, uh, anywhere within sixty days prior to expiration to one year, so we're in that window. Kind of what kickstarted it was, uh, Sportsman Clubs interested in pursuing a CPW grant. Um, that typically on the guidelines with the CPW grant wants to see either ownership. Basically maintenance responsibilities for fifteen years. Or if the ground is not owned by the applicant, i.e. leased by a local government or from a local government. That the appropriate lease is in place. And so right now, when they go out to apply for the grant. Um, theoretically, there's an expiration date less than six months away. And so by renewing it now, strength strengthens that application on their half behalf. Um, as far as considerations, it identifies the lease's performance and under and compliance with the terms of the lease, the need of the town. Uh, for the use of some or all the lease premise and then the public interest. Um, the current lease twenty fourteen replaced the prior one, that was two thousand four to twenty fourteen, the. Uh, rodeo grounds master plan identifies nineteen nineties, we're here tonight, nineteen sixty-five, sixty-four. Um, and then the origination, as far as the picture dates way back, uh, prior to that. So broke down as far as, um, considerations, individual language included in the lease agreement. Um, no known non-performance or compliance issues. Uh, as far as the need for the town, it's identified in the master plan for the rodeo grounds in Chicago Ranch. Property that was finalized in March of twenty twenty-three, so. Long-term horizon plan identifies that location with the Sportsman Club. And then public interest, they identified two hundred and five members of the Sportsman Club and obviously it expands beyond that, so. Um, with the original being, uh, approved via ordinance. Uh, ordinance has been drafted for the renewal to formalize that component for an extended lease. And then the only other portion is it does reference that, um, rent VC shall pay total rent to, um, town for the sum of ten dollars for the initial term. And then rent payable during any renewal term may be agreed upon in writing between the two parties prior to the commencement thereof. And so there's a need to agree to rate, whether it's at ten dollars, uh, for ten years. Again, that's kind of part of the conversation.
Great. Thank you. Is there, is there any discussion about the lease renewal? Questions? Comments?
I just have a question, or I want to get, be sure I understand what I read, is that. The, the Sportsman Club could cancel within like a night with ninety days' notice? And we, the town also found a purpose that seemed more important or urgent, I guess. We also could, that would be one condition under which we could cancel or?
Not under the current lease terms. If you renewed this current lease, there's a section that lists exactly what you can terminate the lease for.
Okay.
Um, it's, it's under.
One forty.
Section nine.
Yeah.
Page one forty-eight. And so like, really, the one that gives you sort of the right to be able to, to terminate. At your own will is the sale or proposed sale of the property by the town.
Yeah.
Other ones are basically, um, um, Sportsman Club events, like coming insolvent, you know, not being able to operate in traps.
Okay, but if the town felt, I guess it would be sell, selling rather than using it for another.
The Sportsman's Club can just not, you don't want to do it any longer. By notice to the town, outside of the renewal window. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and then, how, why is the lease ten dollars? Is, can anybody shed light on that? What was the thinking there? Everybody was around?
But, well, two thousand fourteen, my, my guess is it's probably because they felt like it was a, it was a good community resource. Typically, when you see leases that are for just nominal fee, it's because the public entity feels like what's happening on that property provides a public benefit. And it serves it, you know, at least a portion of the citizens. That's generally why you do it. That's a fair market lease.
Thanks. Any other comments here? Would someone like to make a motion?
I would.
Okay, go ahead.
If you, are you gonna comment or?
I was gonna make a motion to approve, but.
Well, I was gonna make a motion to approve at the same rate.
Okay.
I'd second.
And is that how it's written in, um, the ordinance twenty-one?
So you're basically approving, so you're gonna be, take a look at your ordinance, sorry, gotta get to the right page, uh. Yeah, it actually, uh, it's just approving a, we, uh, a renewal term going to May sixth, twenty thirty-four, so it's getting into the same terms as the original lease. So it probably, the motion will be to approve ordinance number twenty-one, series twenty twenty-three, and that would basically be at the ten, ten dollar rate.
Yeah. Cindy, is that the motion you'd like to make?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-one, series of twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. So we have Swisher and McCretzy. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Lease is renewed, almost tomorrow. Alright, good, thank you all. Okay, so now we have the, um, draft of the twenty twenty-four fee schedule. And, um. Is this Joel or you, Philip?
We, we tie it into the budget process, so. I'll explain this, uh, madness of neon yellow and red. Kind of glows at you. Oh, sorry, yeah. Um, so, yeah, this is, this is basically the, the board's opportunity to preview what staff is proposing and the fee schedule. For, uh, changes for twenty twenty-four. At the next meeting with the budget, you will be, uh, considering adoption of the new fee schedule, so this is an opportunity for you. Ask questions, uh, change some things. You know, wherever that part of the discussion may lead. So the, the process that we go, um, through is, is Paula, as our town clerk, helps. Uh, get everybody's attention to this, the department heads review their areas. Um, it's something that's, it's been. Looked at, discussed quite a bit over the last few years as we've experienced growth and new facilities and things like that, especially like lots, lots of new special events. Uh, so I think the board's been in discussions about fees for a bit, um, and, and so. But what we, what we try to do is balance, um, the cost of doing business on behalf of our. Community and our taxpayers so that, um, you know, we can provide these services and, and continue to maintain facilities and parks and open spaces. Uh, while also keeping things, uh, affordable and in alignment with, uh, with our community, so. We, a lot of these rates are, uh, the basis is what, what are the costs to the town, right? And so, so you can go through there and see how the different areas are, are proposing some changes. I, I'm not gonna go through each one of those. I will, uh, speak a little bit about the water, because that's a lot of yellow and red. Uh, basically, all of our water fees are, are going up five percent and, and I provided the board a kind of a heads up, this was coming. This comes from our twenty twenty-two water rate study, uh, master plan that is on our website. Uh, it was the basis for when we reset water rates in twenty twenty-two. Uh, and, uh, essentially, it, it is going up by a, a consumer price index amount. And that is right around five percent, uh, for, for twenty twenty-three, so. The, all of the water rates are adjusted by that amount, and that's all of them, including, uh, monthly water rates. Um, water taps, water dedication fee, late payment fee, all, all those things. Again, add the direction of our water rate study so that we can continue to, to pay for the operations. Our water fees are structured and aligned with, um. I guess for the, for the use or for the demand on our system, so. Monthly water rates, uh, pay, pay for water operations, ongoing water operations. In addition, we are going through a pretty significant project right now, our water treatment plant. That all of our existing, uh, consumers rely on, so that's integrated into the overall fees. The other fees that are tied to development, like water dedication fees and system impact fees. Those are covering the cost on the development side of things. So I just wanted to highlight, we're not, this isn't an increase that's trying to cover. Growth versus existing, it's, the separate fees are, are how that is, uh, delineated. So, um, that's, that's the look at water. Um, you have some of the other department heads here, if there's some questions in some of the other areas as well. And I will take a pause.
Sue, um, I just have a question I don't completely understand on the, uh, building, planning, zoning. Fee, I'm looking at the bottom of page one sixty-four and the top of one sixty-five. Just, it looks like the deposit is more than, I don't know if the deposit is more than here, how that. How, like, for example, the first one under subdivision minor condominium plat, deposit's eight sixty-five, and then what is the five hundred after that?
Yeah, so, so some of this, um. There's, the code, code has a language in there where you, where we can take deposits, where we should be taking deposits, and where you also take fees, right? And so, um, but there's a lot of confusion as to when those are paid, what those are for, et cetera. The, the code spells out for deposit for minor subdivision, so many hours, um, of engineering time, so many hours of planning time, so many hours of legal time. And so those hours broken up, multiplied by later, you'll see the hourly rate. So that's where that eight sixty-five comes from. Um, and we wanted to highlight, uh, this is actually the deposit you're supposed to pay. Uh, this is, we have a fee just for us to process that, and that's the cost of processing. That, but then there's additional review. There's always additional review. Not always, but, um, we have that deposit, we can draw it down. So when we, when we talk to, uh, town attorney on something. We can bill an hour of that time.
Okay.
Back for that developer or, or some RG engineering time, et cetera.
I see.
And that deposit, we'll take it down, and then if we, uh, if there's money left over, we'll give, give it back to the applicant or we'll request some additional funds, depending on. How in-depth the project is. So most of that and most of the other items under, uh, planning and development are just to. Clarify things that already exist, you know, or discrepancies and, you know, code numbers and things like that, but that's where that. That's where that deposit's for.
Alright, thank you. Were there comments?
Mayor, one thing I forgot to mention, um, and under the water section, there should be. Uh, an effective date. Yeah, there it is on page one seventy-seven. On the monthly service rates, it has an effective date of the March twenty twenty-four billing. Uh, I think there was a, a good discussion, a kind of good suggestion that, uh. We provide notice to the public about changes in, in these rates, and so. That would allow us, over a couple of months at the beginning of the year, to, through the water billing newsletter, to. Let people know what's changing and why. And so the water monthly rates would have an effective date in March, March bill.
Okay, yeah, not January, March. Other questions or comments on the fees?
Actually, to, since it's on that same page, one seventy-seven, the annexation impact fee, is that something that is, I'm gonna say ad hoc, but. Cause it could be different for different annexations, so that's not something we'd have to have, okay, right now, so, okay.
Now, that, that allows staff and the, to propose to the board, uh, an impact fee that could be related to traffic or. Uh, impact on the roads, um, that requires, you know, steel plowing, things like that, so. It's consideration based on what's happening with the annexation proposal.
Thank you.
Here, can, can we go back just for a second on the effective date of the service rates? I, I know I was one who wanted some, uh. Give folks a heads up about it, but I don't know, uh, what it's costing us not to have those fees increased for the first two months of the, of the year. Just, do you have a, any idea on that? No, sorry, putting you on the spot here.
Um, I was, I, didn't cause me any heartburn.
Okay.
To, to bump it a couple of months.
Okay.
And in my projection and the budget for revenue, water revenue, it take, it took into account that, that. That rate change starting in March, I don't remember off the top of my head what that. Evil, I don't, and it wasn't.
And the reason I ask is, um, I mean, I'd like folks to have notice, um, holidays are probably the greatest time to give them notice, but. Um, if we do it every year, over many years, those two months could, could cost us quite a bit, so I don't know. Um, whether we shorten it another, you know, going forward, and we see how it goes this year. Um, I guess wire use is less in the winter and summer, but is that, is that logical thinking or not?
Right, or, yeah, our, our January, February buildings are much smaller in the summertime.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't think it, and you would be on a twelve-month interval if we kind of followed the same, so I don't think it's gonna cause a.
Yeah.
Yeah, exponential reduction in long-term revenue. If we kind of provided this two-month buffer at the beginning of the year.
Okay, thank you.
So Philip, would it be your desire that we look at this, um, over the next two weeks and talk about it at the next meeting, or do you want us to push ahead here?
Uh, the, we'll, we will present this, um, in a clean format, uh, but the board can change the fee schedule at any time, so unlike all the budget documents. This will be in the packet, and you could say, we want this fee to be six dollars instead of five. We could, you could approve it as amended, and we could just change the fee schedule after that, so if you wanted to provide. So if you wanted to provide feedback at the next meeting on the fee schedule, that would be fine.
Okay.
Earlier the better, that way we don't have to capture too many changes in the minutes and all of that. But get no harm if it's at the next one.
So should we comment to you directly during the next two weeks of changes? Call early, call often?
Do you want, do you want to take them, Paula, or do you want me to take them?
Since I'm making the changes, it might be easier to come to me. And then what I'll do is send out another schedule reflecting those changes from this one. And then like you just said, Phillip, in the packet will be a nice, clean fee schedule. But that way all the other trustees would see like what you said, Libby, you know, I want to increase this by X amount of dollars. And that way everyone can see that beforehand and also weigh in in the middle of it.
I want to make sure I'm clear on how this is going to go about because there's an open meetings law, right? You guys shouldn't be having these long back, back and forth conversations about the fee schedule outside of an open meeting. So I think if somebody has input, it's fine for our trustee to send Paula, hey, I'd like to see this. Their trustee wants to do the same thing and Paula can try and correlate them. But it's going to be like a whole group communicating before the meeting and that's going to be an open meetings issue.
Is there something that you're thinking about now, Libby, that you want changed?
No, not me, no, I, I haven't studied it actually. So, um, I don't know if anybody else has, but as you said, we can change it later. So, um,
There's no issue with communicating because, you know, you're, put comments directly to a staff member.
Right.
It's just that we have a little more on the email.
Then how does the staff member know for sure?
Yeah.
How to change it?
Yeah, I think you can keep track of it. Like it's kind of similar to filter in the public hearings for the budget that here's the change, list of bullet point changes that were received from trustees directly to staff at the next meeting. So you're not looking at the, the beyond, the whole thing. Everything remained the same. Here's a concise, what's the difference from what was included in the packet at the last meeting? And then it can hone down the conversation at the 12.
And then the board would need to, I would say, make a motion to.
On the 12?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so if you have comments, send them to Paula. Work for you?
Hard make it tough.
All right, good, well, thank you.
Keep your eagle.
Okay, now on with Paula's, uh, comments here, this has to do with the election of 2024. There would be an election in April, but one of the questions would be to move it later to coordinate with the county to have the election in November. But Paula, would you like to tell us about this?
I'll just give a recap, brief recap and things. Because as you recall, we brought this subject up in September 12th meeting during staff interaction. We discussed change in the election from April to November and extending elected officials' term. At the October 24th meeting, the board approved a motion directing legal and staff to move forward to create ballot language for a ballot question on the April 2nd, 2024 ballot related to the changes. The board is being asked to consider approving resolution number 77, which submits the question to the registered electors and contains the ballot wording.
Might make a quick comment.
Yes.
So what this will do is, you know, you'd have your, you'd have your April 2024 election. And if this passes, it would basically, your 2026 election would then be in November. Your 2028 election would be in November and the board members' terms, who would ordinarily end in April, in 2026, 2028, get extended to November. That way you don't have an election in November and board members that, whose terms expire in April because they were elected to the year. It doesn't pass, then just be back to April, the terms are just till April.
Okay, and the, and the April election is held at town hall, right? People.
Well, it will be a mail ballot election. So we will mail the ballots out and we'll drop the ballots off at town hall or through the mail.
Okay.
And then we'll do all the tabulation at town hall, mailing the ballots from town hall. We conduct the election.
It's a big job. And then, um, but if this passes, then in future elections, uh, we would coordinate with the county.
Our regular municipal elections, we would coordinate with the county. Any recall elections or special elections the town would have to do unless it would fall with county clerk's schedule. But normally a recall election would probably not fall with that schedule and probably a special election would not fall with that schedule. So the town would still have, you know, the responsibility of doing an election. Plus the town has responsibility of doing the candidate petition process, determining who's eligible to be on the ballot.
Yeah, good. Does everybody understand? And are there any questions or comments from the board? Would someone like to make a motion in regard to resolution number 77?
Adoption of resolution number 77.
One second.
Okay. Okay, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Paula.
Thank you.
Okay, so now, um, it looks like Jeff Parker is going to talk to us about forever chemicals.
Oh, I'd be happy to, you know, Brian has a file in your packet that kind of outlines the issue that we're dealing with. These are the PFAS chemical litigation. A lot of, a lot of these, um, forever chemicals are putting all kinds of stuff like Teflon and they're, I'm going to use it in Gore-Tex, uh, cereal, and they're also using it on a firefighting foam. So the manufacture of these, of these chemicals are basically defendants in lawsuits from water providers throughout the country. I think one of the main suits is in South Carolina. There's a couple of big suits right now that are basically settling. There, I think at one point, I may have bet this number wrong, there's maybe several thousand individual lawsuits relating to this issue. All of them were consolidated into one as a water provider and as an airport operator, where a lot of, uh, airport firefighting foam is used, although my understanding is there may not have been any use at your airport. Um, the town, uh, and a lot of our clients trying to decide what do we do with these, with current cases? So these two current cases, you have to decide whether to do nothing and be a member of the class that gets some settlement funds. Uh, or actually opt out and not be a member of the class and you have to pursue your own lawsuit. Via probably another law firm that handles these kinds of things. These are big, massive cases where attorneys kind of dedicate their entire, you know, you know, years and years to like the single case. This is not the kind of work that our firm would do. They're relatively complicated because how you qualify for a percentage of awards depends upon what readings you have in your water system, where you're located. There's ways to maximize your ability to get money out of these settlements. We believe, and I think it's pretty clear, there's going to be many other lawsuits of this nature in the future where you may qualify to obtain, um, some kind of award. The big issue you're looking at as a water provider is the EPA is going to be adopting, or at least they, they, they're, they're definitely going to be adopting regulations that regulate PFAS and water supply. My understanding is very strict requirements, we're going to require probably some treatment adjustments uh, for, you know, most water providers in the country. Uh, there's, I know there's a lot of different options out there people are looking at for treating for PFAS. But my understanding is it's going to increase the cost of treating for water. So if there's money available from the manufacturers of these chemicals to help offset some of these costs, I don't think anybody thinks it's going to offset all your costs, but it's good to, it could help. And then also, you know, if you've ever used PFAS in the firefighting activities, even in training or anything like that, you know, you want to think about, well, what kind of exposure do we have for using PFAS that might get into the water system? And, you know, so, um, the law firms that are basically the plaintiff's attorneys in these cases are, are, my understanding is they're doing these on a contingency fee basis. I think like forty percent of the settlement goes to the law firms. And then, you know, and then it's distributed to all these different other plaintiffs depending upon all different categories and classifications and all these different complicated things that, um, you know, would take an expert to really understand. So I, I looked around and my firm looked around to see who, who in, in Colorado, what attorneys are actually experienced with this or are dealing with this. And we got ahold of this one law firm who's done work for other clients of ours in other situations, uh, where they have several attorneys who are basically, um, they, they are not prosecuting the cases for plaintiffs. They are basically advising, um, potential water, water providers on how to best proceed. You know, here, okay, let's, let's talk to your public works director, you know, what do you have in your water system? Like what are your readings? Here's something you should be looking for. Here's how you maximize your, your, your settlement value. Here's what we should be doing in the future. Here's the next case coming down the pipe. So we have maybe a dozen of our clients right now are engaging these same attorneys. Uh, I spent maybe an hour or two on the phone with them, with some partners of mine, listening to them explain what's going on. And they know what's going on. It's very nice. We're just aware, firm can provide the kind of advice that you need on this. So i- if you would like to get some good expert legal advice and maybe, um, over the next year or especially right now, because we need to decide by December, I think it's the fifth and really soon, next, the next week, uh, a couple of these cases, how we want to, how we want to proceed. I think it'd be a good idea to engage them. They're not the cheapest attorneys in the world, but their rates are kind of what you'd be seeing for getting good advice from an expert attorney on something like this. And you can use them as much as you want or, or don't want. You know, aside, they're, they're very friendly, they're very easy to work with. You know, they're, they're helping a lot of different entities in the state. So they're not going to be just doing the research for you. They're going to know this and they're going to be able to tell you what they know for other, you know, other, um, water providers and airport operators for that matter. And so Brian and I talked and we wanted to bring to you to see if it's something that you think's a good idea. We have a tentative meeting scheduled with them tomorrow morning. If, if, under the, uh, if you do approve this, uh, Brian can sign off on the engagement agreement. And then you can just monitor how much time they spend and if you're thinking it's too much money, it's not worth it. You can always stop or you can just use them on and off as needed. I think you probably need a few hours of advice, you know, anywhere from two to 10 initially just to get some of the information and try to maximize our ability to, uh, recover. I think the first question would be, should we participate in these, in these, um, class action settlements? The answer is probably going to be yes, because it's just going to be too much to do your own thing, probably. But the more important thing is, okay, now that we're participating, what do we do to get into the high, you know, the higher category, I do the most percentage of the settlement funds? How does this work? And so that's what I think you'd be talking to them about. Um, so, you know, my advice would be, I think it's a good idea to do that, but, you know, it's going to cost some money. But you probably will pay, pay off over the next year or two or three as you just sort of contact them for information about the next lawsuit, the next thing that's happening.
Would we be able to get advice on our new water treatment plant? As to whether it's, um, going to be able to filter out any of these chemicals?
Well, I think that, that's probably, they can advise what's going to be needed. And I don't think we have the actual standard passed yet by the EPA. It's probably going to be coming from like your engineers, uh, and people who are thinking on that, but they don't know what the standards are and they'll be able to help, you know, advise. Well, this is a new standard that we see is coming and there's this happening in the regulations. But, um, they won't be able to probably look at your plant and say, this is the type of filter you need for it. But they can just advise as to what the standards are, what's the budget.
Is it your sense or is it known that whether, uh, all of the remedy funding for this thing or the prevention in the future, mostly remedy, I guess, is coming from these lawsuits or is EPA?
I, I, I haven't heard of any federal funds that are going to be available. You know, my expectation is a lot of these water providers in the state, smaller ones, are going to be able to afford it.
Yeah.
I, I, I just don't know. And I know that, I, I hear like, oh, this university has this new technique that might come to market. It might be great, but I just don't know, I don't know enough to say. I just think that there may be federal funding available. They have to be.
Yeah.
But at the same time, you know, you want to make sure if there's going to be money from the manufacturers. Yeah, yeah.
It sounds as though there's definitely going to be regulations put in place that we'd have to follow, even if our got pretty good water out here, which is, we're very lucky for. So even, even if we're that the best water in the world, we still need to institute whatever the.
Well, you know, I, I guess, I, I, that's a great question because if you don't have PFAS in the system.
Right.
Then you may not have to do anything. You have to just, I think, I think the resulting, I'm not an expert in water. You have to treat to this standard.
Right.
And if your, if your standard's coming out without PFAS, then you're not going to have to spend a million dollars to get the filter. Unless PFAS begins to show up, I, I, I guess, so.
I'd like to, Sean, do you have anything you'd like to add here?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, this is all pretty new. Like, I'd like to maybe talk to somebody that might work with CPHE a little bit. But, but what I wanted to share is that we did have, um, you know, we, we had a first round of sampling done for, um, to, uh, this year, we sampled in April, we sampled it in October. Our second round is coming back to us, probably going to take about two more months. That, all of that information will be in the consumer comment, consumer comments report uh, that we produce for this year. We produce it usually, uh, in May or April. I think this data needs to be provided to be within 12 months of sampling. So that's realistic timeframe number that we have, uh, getting that produced. We do have, we do have, uh, results. I, I believe that there's, there's, I don't know, Andrew, I don't know if there's the MCL established, but I know that there's a minimum risk level established. I think it's like point zero two, point zero three. Um, and then I, you know, when you look at these reports, like these are really, really weird, really weird names. I can't even pronounce them. They're really challenging, but, but it's a whole gamut. It's, 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 it's a lot of, it's a lot of sample. It's, it, it's a big range. We sampled that both of our entry points, the water plant downstream, the water plant, and then well number three, too. You know, everything that we sampled was well below, um, minimum risk levels, like way, like, you know, maybe it's, it, it appears like that we have trace, but I don't know what that detectable limit is. And I don't know if, you know, so then definitely we're talking with power on this one. Trying to get a better understanding, it's good to have a chemical engineer in your pocket from time to time. So, and, and also Joe, you know, RC is, is helping, you know, kind of facilitate this. So, um, what, what do you know about this?
Yeah, I think the, the MCL will be four parts per chili, which is extremely, extremely low. And the PFAS and PFO is a whole suite of compounds. So I think your, your, your memo really covered it pretty well. And we have the advantage of being upstream of everybody. You know, the continental divide is right there. And so most of the country does not enjoy the benefit that we add. But these, these chemicals are extremely bad for us in the environment. I mean, they, they persist. And so I think some of this settlement stuff has to deal with your degree of impact. And it's a good news, bad news scenario. The good news is we're probably not impacted very much, but we certainly could be. So lends itself to the importance of our source water protection plan and making sure that we know and we can be able to monitor and control what happens upstream of our intake. And so that kind of circles back into the topic we've had recently on that, that this stuff is extremely difficult to get out of your water because nothing sticks to it. You know, that's what it was designed to do. So it persists in the environment. It's very recalcitrant to most types of treatment and biodegradation. But I think pursuing some legal advice, whether we opt in or opt out. I think there's two cases, there's two settlements, there's the three M and font, right? There's a December 4th and a December 11th deadline. We have to decide to opt in. Unfortunately, those deadlines are before our next meeting. So this is a little bit of a fire trail. But it does seem like from what I'm hearing, most municipalities are opting in rather than pursuing a Lone Ranger approach, trying to catch three M. Yeah, it's very expensive to do that. But I, you know, I'm just not aware of, of, you know, what other options could be out there. You know, and I think that the reason why I was advising to get, get this advice is I'm just not able to give you good advice. It's just our qualification. I think if, if I had to put my finger in the wind, I'd say just don't, don't opt out. Cause by not doing anything, you opt in. Um, you'd probably be okay, but I don't know all the different little tricks for getting your, checking your, when you have to, you have to have certain tests on by certain dates to qualify for things and.
I think we, we, we've already started some of that data, so we have that data.
Yeah.
And I do believe the database is set up so that you can, you can estimate your, the, the impact that you'll see based on your raw water quality. So there is already a framework for a payout that is, I think, draft, but it's not finalized.
That's my understanding too.
Yeah, so I think we, we've started gathering the data and Sean's still on track to capture more data that would, that would qualify for that reporting period.
Right.
But I think just from, from my opinion, the, the rationale to opt out, I think we're pretty high to say we, we have a chance to be Lone Ranger or to join some other Lone Rangers.
You know, like if you're downstream or you're on the Mississippi, that's a totally different analysis, but.
Yeah.
Great spot.
And I think, um, yeah, it doesn't benefit.
And I think, um, yeah, another benefit to bringing on these attorneys, like I said, I I I really think you can use them in a very um strategic manner, is that this is not gonna be the end of these lawsuits. These are just two, the two big ones right now. And there's gonna be, my understanding is there's gonna be other lawsuits based on um polluters with PFAS, and it sounds like we don't have any, we haven't used any fire tiny former airport, so shouldn't be an issue for us. Um, but I'm not sure what else PFAS is in. So I I might be helpful. Look, here's the next lawsuit. Here's what we should do, just call, they're engaged, an hour of advice, you're done. Um, but once again, I guess, I don't wanna force you to hire anybody. I just think that I just don't have the uh the expertise to advise you on it, so.
So what we do with these first two cases doesn't tie us into being class action or not in later cases?
With other with other plaintiffs, no. Yeah, it would be for these cases.
Yeah.
Yeah. And other cases may be different, from different different types of sources that are polluting.
Jeff, one one question, just from a concept perspective. Is this any way analogous to the, you know, the tobacco settlement from a
Yeah.
couple of decades.
Yeah, and it's kind of like the uh, we don't have a, we don't have a state. Uh, it's like the opioids, opioid settlement, too, but we don't have the state of Colorado just running the PFAS settlement like you did the opioid settlement, same way. Yeah. Yeah, and these big class action lawsuits, you know, I I'm always, I I'm just kind of amazed at how much these attorneys knew in an hour conversation. I was like, oh, I would never have thought to think about, oh, here's another, oh, it's a good idea for the client to be thinking about, and just, you know, maybe, you know, an hour's conversation, you guys will all be like, we already knew all this, it's not even worth it or good. But I think that it it would be a nice confirmation to have, you're not missing something that could help.
Okay, um, so do you want us to, I mean,
I I think
you need a thought from us now, or are you gonna go?
No, I I think they're in the, I mean, it's up to really, up to Brian, but you know, this is gonna be within within, well, it's it's spending authority up to a certain amount. But if the if the trustees wanted to say, go ahead, right side, or if you want us to prove it, and and then you've basically signed off on it yourself, either way, it's it's up to you. Brian, do you wanna have the board vote on this? Does he have authority, or is it is giving you guidance to sign it enough? Legally, I'm finding a way.
Guidance one way or another, yeah, direction on whether you're
Yeah.
were able to sign that basically attorney-client privilege, that's the intent behind it, to be able to have the conversation tomorrow for an hour or two to see kind of what the background is. And I think there's a, this could I don't think the primary conversation, I don't see it being do we opt in or do we opt out?
But we have to make that decision before the fourth.
True, but I don't think it sounds like that's gonna be the primary. It sounds like pretty much everybody, it's an automatic opt-in, right?
You have to choose to opt in.
Maybe in that room, it doesn't sound like they're probably gonna gear us towards like, don't do the automatic thing, opt out. It's gonna be more of, okay, everybody's opting in, but once you get in, here's the things to identify and keep an eye on as far as monitoring schedule and stuff like that to get as much um settlement money as possible to contribute towards potential changes in monitoring. Uh, it's kind of like the lead and copper thing coming down from Flint, right? Um, there's systems that don't have a lot of lead and copper that don't change the treatment requirements, but the testing alone is an expense, right, the monitoring alone, so. I don't know offhand, but I think it's worth that initial conversation where you have one hour, two hours to say, okay, everybody's gonna be opted, you know, automatically opted in on October or December fourth. Going forward, here are things to keep an eye on, monitor, to make sure that you're in the upper tier, have a better chance of getting a better settlement associated with it. That's my feeling. They're not gonna talk, try to talk us into opt out, go to loan type situation.
I don't, yeah, no, I I I don't think that's gonna be the case. So I guess, I mean, you know, just as a note, I guess, if the if the if they say you you should, you should definitely uh opt out. I don't think I hear that. I haven't heard that in my conversations with them. You know, I I guess that's a big decision to make, and I I don't think many times, time's tight, but I don't think we're gonna wanna just have Brian say, okay, here's our opt-out notice, and we probably have to do something with you on Monday or Tuesday. I don't think that's gonna happen. We'll know tomorrow.
Yeah, I think, oh, I think, I think opting in seems like a good idea. I think as long as it's not something where we're paying more to lawyers than we're getting out of it.
Absolutely.
I think as long as that's, as long as we're getting more out of it in the long run than it is paying lawyer fees, then I think it's a no-brainer. I think it, you know, especially if it's, if we get money towards ulstering our water system to be
Yeah, I mean, and I was interested, it's it's like a parts per trillion type standard, or parts per trillion. I think that's the number I heard from somebody, but it hasn't been finalized, that's what they're looking at. I mean, I guess the question, you're you're sorry, you're you're below that, you're not getting any money. That are you gonna get a couple thousand bucks? You might spend more on a lawyer than you would. You know, if if it's gonna be a reasonable settlement with a reasonable amount of money, then it's gonna be worth it. Um, so, I mean, I think the initial conversation's gonna cost you a few thousand bucks, you know, a thousand bucks. And then you'll have an idea what kind of money you're looking at, maybe, and then in the future, you can decide whether to go after more. You're not gonna spend twenty grand on lawyers with that way. No.
Right, but we need, we need their advice in terms of what kind of records we need to be keeping for the future.
Yeah.
Because they'll keep coming up, these cases, and we need to know what we're, what we are gonna benefit most from.
Right, and I think you, once you kind of have an idea of what they're saying, that that you'll be, okay, we're on the right track, I think it's fine, we're not missing anything. Oh, we will do this, and then you just check in and get good advice. Um, you know, a few hours every, you know, a few months or something like that, you might be
Depending on what comes down.
Right, yeah, that's my thought at least. I mean, things are different, we'll, we can up your charge, so.
I think an important component of it is the waters, the water and the water system, you know, and the monitoring, uh, that's one component, but I think couldn't even be worthwhile for that hour or two, that initial one that says, hey, airport, the, you say you never have, but it's probably worthwhile to actually go through and document that right now. Right? Because even if it hasn't been used, it's a known source of these chemicals, and so even getting that type of advice that says here are the things to get your ducks in a row as an airport, water system aside, is probably maybe the more important part of it.
Protection. But I support moving ahead to just do more fact-finding and discussion to see, um, you know, what they recommend for these first two cases, which sounds like it will be just to do nothing and therefore opt in. Um, and then take, see what the next steps are.
Okay, I think that's pretty good advice, pretty good guys from the board, would you do that? Yep. I'm seeing, I'm seeing, oh, go ahead.
Just ask one thing. If if they do advise you to opt out, would you just let us know?
Yeah, I would, I'm with Jeff. I don't think they'll give me the freedom to opt out myself. It would probably be board action, but yes, I will let you know if that ends up being a a recommendation.
Okay.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that to our attention.
Yeah.
Okay, um, now, um, we're gonna go back to Paula again uh for business item G, and this is really from Paula and not from any of us. So there's not, there's no real discussion about this.
Correct. This is regards to the top side annexation. And for the record, I confirmed that the top side annexation petition and all company documents that were received on November seventeenth, twenty twenty-three were emailed to the Board of Trustees on Wednesday, November twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. The annexation process will follow requirements identified in the Colorado revised statute at subsequent meetings.
Okay, so, oh. What's that? Okay, good. Now, uh, we'll do staff reports. Could we hear from the town administrator, please, Brian?
Uh, yeah, so um, staffing-wise, uh, we're in the middle of employee evals. Uh, John's got that structured. That'll continue over the next month. Um, met with Gina, maybe as far as setting up structure for evaluations for the appointed positions at the next meeting. It kind of is utilizing that work session slot, but in a structure where the meeting will start at six, allowing to go into executive session for this evaluations and then come back into the regular meeting at seven o'clock, so. Timing works the same, the structure of the agenda will look a little bit different. Um, engineer, hopefully have an engineer on board in the next week or two. Um, so, pretty excited about that. I think that'll be a good one to get on board, um. That's within Sean's wheelhouse and seeing how he works in and integrates with all the different consultants that are out there. Um, so that kind of staffing-wise, we'll jump into special projects managers, uh, some point of here in the near future, I think a big part of it, there's a play with the engineer and the special projects manager, a potential opportunity to see who would fit in each role, um, so we'll move forward with that. As far as projects coming up, we've got a number of RFPs out there, uh, that'll be considered probably at the next meeting. The board look at schedule, the twelfth looks hefty. Um, it's a bit stacked. That's kind of part of the concept of trying to cancel the Christmas meeting, right? Nobody wants to meet uh the day after Christmas, so we'll stack it up, and a couple of those items are kind of homestretch budget, should be uh kind of a um just bookkeeping thing at that, at that time. Uh, these guys were we talked about today. The building code adoption will be the third time we've heard about it, so lot just housekeeping, more than anything, then a few RFP reviews. This is always gonna be an ever-changing fluid document all the way up until we put the thing out, but it helps track uh what we have going on. That's kind of the extent of that report. Uh, due, Jack is not here, Jack is sick, so um he's trying to go home, take some cold medicine and get some good, good night's rest. On as far as the airport, the information's in the packet. Um, their fence project and apron project are pretty well done, uh, to the point of just collecting all the invoices, uh, and tracking the reimbursement to finalize the financial portion of it. Um, upside of that, they've got an RFP out for the engineer services, that's a requirement every five years. It's just uh requirement every five years, they go back out, a lot of times you end up just sticking with the same engineer, but provides others opportunity to submit their proposals as well, so. Questions on either airport or administrator?
Okay, thank you, Brian. Um, I would go back to Philip.
Yes, uh, treasure report is on page one ninety-two. I'll have a few highlights here. Uh, first page is again, just kind of an ongoing tracking of any adjustments we are making to the budget. Uh, at this point, I don't see a need for us to do a second amendment for our twenty twenty-three budget. Uh, the things that have been that have taken place in the second half of the year have been really just reallocation from one project to others. Uh, we did, the board did approve the eighteen thousand dollar deposit to the court for the Carbonette Street parcel. But because that Carbonette Street housing project, we haven't uh spent out that full three million dollars that was in the budget. So we'll be way under budget on that line item, so that'll save us a little bit of work and uh agenda time in January by not doing a second amendment. Uh, next page, summary of our grants, and um good news to share that DOLA did award the town two million dollars uh through the More Housing Now initiative for the crossing phase one, so uh Paul Andrews and his team, that two million dollars for infrastructure was a big part of their affordability equation, so that's great news on that front. And uh page one ninety-four, uh, sales tax detail for the month of September. You can see there, uh, the numbers for September were uh six percent down from twenty twenty-two, uh, two percent of a budget. And uh, year-to-date, we are for just a hair over four percent above twenty twenty-two. See the breakout between local and uh remote businesses for just the town sales tax portion. And then on page one ninety-five is the uh you know, breakdown of expenses since the last monthly report. And one ninety-six uh list of expenditures over two thousand dollars. I will take any questions you may have.
The trustee questions? Thank you. Okay, um, Shane, Recreation Director.
Good, good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees. Um, a few things to update you all about going on in the Recreation Department. Uh, we've had a few staffing updates um since the last meeting, I believe we had our special events coordinator position open. Uh, we had one internal applicant, um, and it was our facilities assistant, Amy Carlson. Um, and so we interviewed her and decided to offer her the special events coordinator position. Um, but, you know, that means, does mean our facilities assistant position is vacant. Um, so our plan is to um begin the hiring process for that soon. Um, kind of officially starting at the um after the December twelfth meeting that the budget is approved. Uh, because we're just gonna go ahead and offer that as the full-time rec admin assistant position that we have currently loaded into the budget, rather than hiring someone as a part-time facilities assistant and then bumping them up right away, so. Uh, and then in some recent news that did not make the packet, um, Caitlin Miles turned in her letter of resignation to me on Monday. Uh, she's gonna be with us up until December um eleventh. Um, but she got a local job with better pay, better hours, and better benefits, so.
So what's her point?
Yeah, it's because there's nothing we should really do about it, so. Um, but we will have that position open as well. Um, likely, you know, trying to fill that as soon as possible. Um, but it'll probably end up in early January by the time both of those positions are filled, just because of the holidays and um, yeah, staff um trip, or yeah, staffed out of office and all that kind of stuff, so. Um, the plus side is we'll be able to advertise those positions at the same time. Um, and, you know, hopefully, uh, you know, make our marketing uh fu- funds for um advertising those positions go a little bit further. Hopefully get some good applicants for those two new positions. Um, but um Amy is doing a great job um with the transition to special event coordinator, um, really seeing a big benefit of hiring in-house, because you don't have to train them on everything that your department does, just the stuff for their new role, which has been great. Um, and um a combination of Amy and myself will cover uh facilities and events up until the admin assistant position is filled. Um, a lot of exciting things happening on Billy Cordova Memorial Park. Um, we received two bids for the playground, um, and we sent the notice of intent to award on the contract to Star Playgrounds. Um, and we're just working, um, we asked Star for a few tweaks, uh mainly a a larger main play structure from um what they had in their proposal and what has been kind of in the concept drawings, um, you know. The good thing about putting it out for bid this year, we'll see, you know, what everybody else is able to do, um, and, um, you know, if we we kind of made the decision, if we spend a little bit more on a main play structure, really have a big benefit in the park. So, um, we are, um, we'll likely have that contract for you all at the next meeting. Um, and then this Thursday, um, we have our fifty percent design review meeting um with Valery and our landscape architect for the entire park. Um, and we invited parks and public works and admin to um that meeting. And that's gonna be our first chance to give feedback on all the details of the park, um, and really start narrowing down the costs. Um, their um cost estimates were roughly two hundred and thirty thousand dollars short of our current funding. Um, but our current funding was also a hundred and fifteen thousand short of what I was projecting it was gonna cost, so. Not in too big of a hole for this big of a project, but um, you know, doubling what we would still need to raise the project um would be pretty significant, so um, that's gonna be a big part of our meeting on Thursdays, you know, where can we reduce costs, um, and um provide input on all the different features of the park. Um, on the programming side of things, um, getting close to the end of our fall season, um, starting to plan our our Um, on the programming side of things, um, getting close to the end of our fall season, um, starting to plan our, our winter. Um, but um, this fall, we had two hundred and one kids in our youth basketball program, ten teams in our adult basketball program, which was actually where I was right before the meeting tonight. Um, playing a, playing a little bit. Um, and then we're gonna um, kind of wrap up our winter season with a few new program offerings. Our continuing previous program offerings like the Wild Roots Youth Nature Classes, um, for kids under five years old. Um, they, we had one session already this fall. Um, and then we're also going to bring back the Culinary Creations Program. Um, with a holiday cooker, cookie decorating uh, class, which will be um, a little bit different than what that program typically is. Um, but we'll um, offer some holiday cookie decorating. Um, and then a December session of the regular um, culinary creations class. Um, we're hopefully going to start advertising for all of those here within the next week or so. So happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Questions?
It's not really a question, but just saw in your note there that you guys pivoted pretty quickly to trade carpet for door openers. Want to say thank you.
Yeah, um, and it was, it's funny if I would have been here at that meeting, I would have said, well, I was going to have doors as a twenty twenty-five project. So, you know, not that, not that tough. We'll just flip the order. Um, but, um, yeah.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. That'll be great.
Yeah, little, still, still a little question marks, but I'm, I mean, thankfully, hopefully, you know, maybe a door uh, openers, there's a lot of grant funding out there for that. So.
Great. Good. Well, thank you, Shane. Okay, now we're going to go to trustee interaction. Um, and um, I'd like to start out with Andrew tonight.
Oh, wow.
Oh, wow, yes. You don't have to stand up, but you can.
Yeah, um.
Talk to us.
A week ago, yeah, um, at, at the request of Libby and Brian, I reached out to the board member at Sangre de Cristo, Blake Bennett's. And he and I got together just to chat over some things and basically the intent was to at least open an avenue of communication. Um, to see if there's any way that the two entities might work together a bit more collaboratively. And so while neither he nor I speak um, for our respective boards, I just want to kind of give you guys a summary of our conversation. Um, he and I seem to be in agreement that working together as entities would be preferable to the alternative. We agree that the current level of community dialogue uh, involves a lot of hypothetical basis and some of that may be based on Sangre de Cristo's general communications on the issue. We talked about the potential, we're doing some small pilot, pilot scale plans that the town would review and approve. And take a, a, like a baby step approach to see if there's something we can do on a small scale to try to get some specific items discussion rather than remaining the realm of this discussion remaining in the hypothetical. So we thought both of us agreed it would be preferable to try to work together. Um, where we go from here, I don't know. We're on, you know, I seem to have the same sentiment that it'd be nice to try to work together. So that's all I have.
Good. Well, thank you for putting the effort into, into doing that. And, uh, uh, we've always, uh, thought highly of Blake also. So I'm glad that the two of you could, could get together. And um, hopefully we can improve our communication with, with Sangre de Cristo and um, you know, move forward as needed, but not just rashly. So, thank you. Peter, do you have anything? Okay, Gina?
Just a reminder for uh, reviews from everybody come in by the fifth, so I can turn them around in time to get them back out from the seventh. So.
Have you gotten any?
Oh, I have. I have received some, which has been great. So, but.
So, so the program's working okay to just, uh,
I think so.
Do it all electronically and.
Yes, everything seems good so far. I haven't personally entered into looking at anything yet, just like compiling everything. So, but um, um, but then, uh, I did want to bring back up, um, from the report about, um, renewals for the STR and checking to make sure that people are still in compliance. That that was really interesting that you brought that up and, um, and since there's the fee schedule and everything too, it's like, I don't know, like, I don't know how that could all fit together, but I figure it's worth considering something like that as, you know, if it's a one and done and nobody ever checks it again, you know, it's a safety concern. Um, so I, I think I would love to explore that a little bit more and see if there's some possibility of, of doing that. Um, or having at least if it's not every year, every two years or or some kind of check.
Yeah. Joel?
Yeah, there are a few things on the short-term rental, um, code that needs some updating and so we can add that to it pretty easily. And we'll just bring a, a big suite of code changes to go.
Good, good. Mark?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And then the other thing, actually, just speaking to the um, Optimist Club's um, note here. Um, wondering if there is some way we could do something. I mean, we do, we are leasing for ten years, a ten dollar chunk of land to Sportsman's Club, which is great. Um, you know, but I'm just thinking that these people are giving back and it's a lot of public benefit. I mean, I assume, don't know all the details, but um, if that money's coming straight back to the town for the wellbeing and benefit of our community members, maybe there is a way that the fee does not have to be what they have been. Um, I don't necessarily have, I love conversation and others on that, but, um, I think that's important when people are giving back and it's for the benefit that we try to work something out. I do also understand that we need, um, revenue sources coming in so that we can continue to maintain our facilities and infrastructure. So that does not go past me where that is important. But, um, trying to find balance, I don't know. That's where, hey, STR reauthorization and, you know, there, there might be other ways that obviously there, we can, you know, make money to take care of things, but I think when people are really doing something good for the community, we should.
Well, we may need to readdress our, our policy on that. And I think that Shane has gathered some information, haven't you, about, about the forgiveness of rents or that kind of thing? So. And how much they've paid us in the past and.
Yep. So I, I have their numbers from this year. And just to um, remind everybody, we, we currently have a fee waiver policy. Um, basically there are four entities or groups of entities that are exempt from all fees in town. That's local government, uh, Bunevista School District, um, the volunteer income tax assistance that operates out of, um, the Aspen Room, but that, that's just pretty much a facility rental and BB Strong, the four entities that are exempt from all fees in town. Um, all other nonprofits, um, fall under the fee reduction policy, um, which, um, the, the optimists, um, do qualify for, and we waived a number of fees for them this year. Um, total, we waived five hundred dollars in fees. Um, and um, I have in our records that they paid, um, one thousand nine hundred twenty-four dollars on total in fees. Uh, for a total of five events, uh, throughout the year. Um, there, um, uh, in the fee reduction policy, we do ha- have another way to reduce your fees by running recurring events. Um, so if they were to run their pancake breakfast as recurring events, that would also save them an additional three hundred and twenty-five dollars. So, um, yeah, paying just under two thousand, we waived five hundred, um, which is basically all facility, or half fifty percent discount on facility rentals. Um, but overall, um, you know, where you, we bring in about thirteen thousand a year in special events revenue. Um, and we put a lot more um, into that with staff time and, um, you know, from not just our department, but every department. Um, Chaky Fire and everybody else as well. So, um, we can adjust that, look at those policies if you'd like to, but, um, you know, we do give some discounts on our typical fees. Um, and, um, as far as the fee schedule goes, we don't have big increases in our special event fees, but we do have some increases in most of our partner fees. So.
Um, Shane, um, are, are there any other groups that if, if we honor or did more for the Optimist Club, are there other groups that would be sort of in the same category that would, uh, it'd be difficult to?
I, I mean, you know, pretty much, you know, almost everybody that runs a special event is a, a, a large chunk of them are nonprofits and Chaky County-based nonprofits. Um, Leslie ran the numbers last year and I have to look them up, but, um, you know, I, I know the chamber anecdotally, you know, they always said, well, you know, Gold Rush Days benefits the community. We shouldn't have to pay anything for Gold Rush Days. Well, yeah, but we still put a lot of time and effort into that. So, you know, some kind of revenue coming in does help offset all of that staff time that we put into these things.
Yeah, that's a good question. That's exactly what I was going to look. It's like, if we waive every nonprofit, then we're not getting any fees. Fees and we're not covering staff time at all.
Right. It seems like a hard judgment call to say this nonprofit does more for the community than this nonprofit. Just.
Yeah, it could start domino effect, I feel like if we started, if we waive their fee and then we're going to, we have the next person's fee and then I think that's why we have this policy in place and maybe it's something we look at to change, but.
The reason why I bring it up again is mainly just because it goes right back into our specific community where some of the other nonprofits maybe doesn't actually go back to the town of Beatty. That's why I was like, well, maybe this one's more, but I don't know all the other nonprofits in town. If they would do the same, then yes, that means.
If they're giving pancakes away for free, it'd be different.
I do talk to him about the recurring, um, recurring event possibility.
We have, yeah, Leslie had a similar conversation with Optimist Crew this summer. Um, and, um, yeah, we've, we will definitely give them that coaching, um, for their events. Um, you know, I, maybe there's some tweaks that we can make to the fishing derby to try to also fit that one under the, the same, you know, special, you know, recurring event umbrella for a little bit of additional savings. Um, but, um, that's, I mean, really it's just turning in one application, saying you're doing it twice. Um, which, um, has, we haven't always had that option for special event organizers.
Chaky County Foundation, you can always apply.
Yeah, well, I think it would be good for you to, you know, approach him again about, you know, this is at least some way that you can, you know, save some of the fees.
We, we definitely will.
Yeah, thanks for getting that up. Sure. Um, are there other other things like that that were talked about early in the meeting that we need to add or discussion now? Oh, okay. Um, so do you have any, uh?
I don't.
Okay. Heard you play your trombone.
Oh, cool. Thanks.
Great. Yeah, Devin, what?
Uh, the only thing I have is a yesterday take, uh, from EDC reached out to me directly, uh, asked if I'd like to get together with him to have some coffee and discussion. You know, he, he talked in his email about having more regular group interaction, but he, uh, he liked our rapport and wanted to speak with me more about some of my specific concerns. And, um, I emailed him to say that'd be fine. Um, obviously I don't represent the board, um, but if, unless anyone's very much against that, I'll probably meet with him sometime.
I think it's good to meet with him.
Yeah, just.
Same kind of question.
Yeah, I'm also, yeah, I figured I shouldn't mention. I was like, oh yeah, he did do that. I should probably flip the board now, but I'm not gonna shake him or anything.
Somebody go with you, Devin.
Uh, I think we'll be fine. But yeah, I thought that was nice of him to reach out and I'd be happy to talk with him and what have you. So, but yeah, I don't represent the board. I'll just say what I say. And if he has questions about things, I can always direct him to come to us as well. So.
Trustee Swisher?
I'm going back to the Optimist Club.
Okay.
And the only reason I'm going back there is you look on here, they helped eleven thousand with the, with the Boulder Garden, they splash park, state park, river park. It's all rec department stuff, but we're, we're charging them two thousand in fees for a year, but they make considerable donations to the town. And I know, I, I get Devin's point. I, I, I truly do, but do, it's like we're, they're helping us and we're charging them.
Yeah, they've put in a lot of, a lot of sweat equity.
You know, they're helping the rec department, but we're charging them for raising money to help us, basically.
The work and say, you know, I think that's a interesting way to look at it.
But there's no guarantee that they're gonna do that in the future every year, but the Optimist Club is such a good organization and really does do a lot for our community. But as long as they're helping, helping the town rec department, it seems weird that we would charge them.
That could be something we could look at is that having, you know, unless Shane was like, I hate this idea, but you know, if it was some kind of give or take kind of thing, I feel about that.
I mean, it's just tough to quantify, um, just because, you know, if you look at those lists, they're listed contributions, it's, you know, they're not annual contributions. It's, you know, kind of as needed.
Um,
so I, I, I definitely value the Optimist as an organization. We, we partner with them to, um, for, um, the bike, bike to school day. You know, we're right there getting paid, bringing the kids to them to, to serve them the pancakes. So, um, you know, we definitely appreciate everything that we've, we've done. I, it's just tough to, in our current policies, it's tough to single out one organization. But we can definitely look, look at that and try to restructure those policies.
But just if we're going to look at restructuring, just the idea of maybe it's a threshold of staff time instead of looking at the individual. Cause you don't pick winners and losers of nonprofits, but instead it's like, if they're actually taking up a certain amount of staff time, then we can't waive it or something along those lines. It looks like a lot of their events aren't as staff heavy as some of the other things that go on right down from other nonprofits. Um, just throwing that out there. It's, that way it's, it's blind to the actual organization and it's more about the amount of time it's taking up on the staff.
Andy?
Just, could you look at something that's so close to the end of the year? If they've got so many volunteer hours or in twenty twenty-three, the six thousand for River Park, at the end of each year, could you look at, sorry to be blunt about this, but we can quantify what you've done for us and if it exceeds the fee, we'll refund the fee. You know, so you're still, you don't change the, don't change the concept of charging fees, but at the end of the year, we could do a little bit of a trade, you know, if you've done it six thousand dollars and we charge you two thousand. Now, that would account for, because look, it's not consistent year to year to year, but they're substantial. And so each year you could try to account for, hey, what have you done? And that might make a refund because that's a direct contribution to the town.
Yeah, and that, I think that could be that could be applied to other nonprofits as well fairly, fairly easily. Um, you know, we have a, a document that tracks what, you know, the amount of fees we waive for each um, organization, um, each year up to, um, with the cap being up to a thousand dollars for that organization. Um, But yeah, if that nonprofit has financially contributed more than that, might encourage that to be more frequent.
Yes.
Creative thinking. What do we do with it now? You want to put a a model together of how we could do that?
Yeah, yeah, I can have some proposed changes to the um, fee way with fee reduction policy.
Okay, that'd be great. Thanks.
And my other comment was that um, I agree with Gina on S T Rs doing a fire inspection every year. I am sure that motels and hotels have annual thing for the safety of their guests and the safety of the public.
I think pretty much every commercial business has to do that every year.
Great. Okay, good. Okay, um, Sean, got anything?
Um, yeah, I guess a couple of things. Uh, wrapping up the Charles Street project, we got some seating done right before it snows. Um, trusty Rob, I appreciate uh, the connection there and kind of started that with an email. Um, with that grant from that, that small grant that we got from uh, Arkansas. So thanks for, thanks for getting that started. So wrapping up that, the invoicing. I hope that grants, um, um, yeah, a big thanks to Jeff and Catherine. They work hard. Um, yeah, she sends emails out on Saturdays sometimes. So Catherine works hard, not me.
I, I think that, you know, let me, you know, see, yeah, I, I just appreciate that. Yeah, it's pretty heavy looking there for us. Yeah, I, I really like our team. Really like where we're at. Um, we have a, uh, we did um, offer the position, the engineer position. So that's out there and uh, the, uh, the individual that accepted is actually here with us tonight. So Mark, if you wanted to just kind of.
Great.
We signed it for the contract.
Ten years.
Yeah, ten years. I, 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 I can't wait for you all to be able to spend a little bit more time with them. Um, I think we, fantastic opportunity for us. I, I really like our team. Really, really fortunate that stupid sign that surround yourself sign, what is it? Yeah, I, yeah, pretty lucky. Um, yeah, so anyways.
That's so good. Well, welcome aboard. Yeah. Glad to have you here with us. Shane, anything else?
Um, I just wanted to take a second and recognize um, everyone in the recreation department for helping cover department operations while I was out of the country for almost two weeks. Um, everybody kind of chipped in and did a little bit. Everything kept running smoothly.
And you were on red board meeting after immediately flying back.
Yeah.
At seven thirty in the morning.
Yeah. I mean, I might, I might have slept the like twelve hours before that, but.
I was like, oh my God, shit.
Glad you got away.
Yeah, so it was nice.
Brian?
Um, I don't think so. I mean, all of us got one, what we had.
Yeah, we're gonna tag team. All right. The tag team is probably gonna be Brian, Jeff and myself, and maybe even Joel, because all of us were part of this conversation that we had. And our conversation started when we were talking about the building code that you were planning on adopting on December twelfth. One of the things is currently the way the statute is written and what we have to comply by is that entire thirty-two pages have to be published in the newspaper. So we got to talking, you know, Brian had asked, does Town of Beano Vista publish things by title? And we confirmed with Jeff, no, we have to publish the whole entire ordinance. But he did throw out there that we could bring the question to the voters to see if we can change that requirement to publish by title versus ordinance. So we wanted to put that in front of you, but one of the things that Philip brought up to our attention today, back, you know, because he's kind of like one of the long-term people here, you know, of course, we have several. Back in two thousand fourteen, that question was presented to the voters and it lost. And so I did some digging. So on two thousand fourteen, the question that was asked was, shall the Town of Beano Vista be authorized to publish its ordinance by title only rather than publishing the ordinance in full? So that's lost. Um, the results on that were yes, a hundred and eighteen, no, a hundred and seventy-two. So in that election, it was a pulling place election. We had one thousand nine hundred and four active and inactive voters. Total voters who participated in that election was two hundred and ninety-nine. So our voter turnout was extremely low and that was ten years ago. So. So the question before the trustees is, do you want to consider bringing this to the vote, to the voters again, since we know we're already having an election on April second, a hundred and twenty-five more days? But what do you, oh, go ahead.
Oh, when we do thirty-two pages in the newspaper, does town pay for that?
Yeah.
Can't be cheap.
It's legal law system.
So what, what kind of objections? I mean, do, do we have any sense of what was behind the folks who objected?
I was not here in two thousand fourteen. That would have to roll back over to um, those who were also at that time reading the minutes. There was not a unified board decision to even put that on the ballot. There was one trustee who voted no.
I think at the time, that was the primary source of information. Um, a lot has changed, including state statutes on public notifications. Things are moving towards online. Um, even our agendas um, are online. We still post them physical locations, but state law is changing, recognizing that way people get information is changing. So I, I think at the time, one of the trustees just had a bit of a concern about um, would we be cutting out um, information sharing? Um, but it, it's an expensive undertaking and so much of our stuff's online now. I personally don't think it's worth spending that much money. I think we can get information to people that are interested eh, without spending taxpayer money at that level. So I, I think that was the main thing. And Joel, do you remember anything else at the time?
There's also concern about the, the impact to the newspaper or the revenue. It was a much different economic situation at the time. Um, and the newspaper did a very compelling uh, campaign itself against this.
Joel a hundred percent right. That, that was the main. I just wasn't gonna say it quite like that, but.
Max? No, just kidding.
Other jurisdictions. The other jurisdictions in mind had the same issue with papers losing a big revenue source.
Can I ask, how, how often does this occur and what type of cost just ballpark are you talking about?
Also, this is gonna sound.
How often does it happen, Joel? I mean, I, we're talking when code, code changes, right? Ordinances for code changes.
Select the U D C, you had to print the whole thing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like we'll bring, you know, we've got uh, plans to bring forward some code changes, maybe January, February, something like that, which will be like five pages of thing. And then maybe every couple of months, but there were years where we had maybe one code change the entire year.
Well, I know for my budget that we do the public notices, which do also include meetings that we do have to publish. But any time an ordinance that you adopt that involves code, we have to publish. And my but line item is four thousand dollars. And I think now as of the end of November, I have eight hundred dollars left in that line item. But like I said, that also includes some public notice of the ordinances. Be very, so probably, I know I've notified Chappy County Times Mountain Mail that we are having this large of notification just to give them a heads up. So they know that that's gonna impact, you know, the newspaper week of um, the nineteenth. So.
One of the wise, yeah, there's expenditure. Don't get an actual number. You know, you look at twenty, twenty-five, thirty ordinances a year. It's a big one. So I mean, the code adoption, thirty-five pages, that's really when the question comes up. Probably not often, right? Every couple of years. Um, if the water, you know, water department or water fund is going to get a loan of some sort, that's gotta be printed in its entirety. Um, I questioned them how exactly the female floodplain maps were updated uh, via ordinance, if that was via reference, that's kind of what brought it up because that was a big one um, that we adopted via reference. I mean, it's a substantial one. So when you're looking at the really long ones, few and far between, but the few and far between ones that are really long are probably the ones that are a little anonymous, right? I mean, when you're talking thirty-five pages of what essentially is boiled down to adopting code requirements that are mandated at the state level than adopted by the county. Are a lot of people reading the full thirty-five pages?
And term adoption seems to be a little loose.
Yeah, it might be roughly a thousand dollars, eleven hundred dollars to to do this thirty-five page.
And we have to accept it anyway, right? It's not like it's optional.
Right.
So even if it's contested, it's not.
So basically, so we change it to just have the ordinance title? And then can we put something like, if you want more information, check our website?
Yeah, so, but that does take voter approval to do that. It's a, it's a statute.
You have an election coming up, so that's a good time to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
And you may get a much better turnout on this question. I would think, not, not this one, but the other question.
Right. And doing a mail ballot election, we always have a better turnout with mail ballot elections.
Yeah, I think it's worth putting to the voters.
Yeah, yeah. And would, would you create about a question like that? Do you give a rough estimate of what it would save the town or is that?
Can't really.
You can't really do that in the ballot.
I, I mean, it's, it's not what you would normally put in this kind of ballot question or required. I mean, you could, I mean, I think you'd probably put that in maybe something like a resolution that you passed before. That we recommend, you could pass one resolution, you'd say, here's the savings to the town. And it could be published in the paper. And that is tricky. I mean, I understand, I, you know, I understand, like, you know, the community papers, they, you know, they, they get revenue from these things and that's how they report on, you know, local issues. So it's important, but if, I do question how much the actual ordinances are read in the paper when you post them.
Well, when they're at four point five.
Are they really? Yeah. Those they are. I mean, the requirement isn't in place for, you know, for decades. There wasn't even an internet problem where it was started. It's, it's got a good purpose. It's just maybe not necessarily serving that purpose. Believe it, ten years ago, they're printing out packets.
So would you like a motion on that to make a change?
A motion to direct legal and staff to proceed with drafting the ballot language and then we can have a resolution the next meeting with the ballot language on it.
Okay. Somebody want to make that motion to direct staff and legal to draft the ballot language?
I'll make that motion.
We got, um. All in favor?
Alright.
Anyone opposed? Okay, great. Motion passes. Um, so weren't we talking to you? Do you have anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Okay. Philip?
Nothing for me.
Okay, Jeff?
No, thanks.
That's it. Thank you.
All right, Joel?
Uh, two quick things. One, we're gonna have a planning zoning commission meeting next week, but we'll see. Board advisory board as well, um, so we can kind of start working together and some um, collaboration, which is good, have a joint meeting. And two, uh, just a thanks to Sean and his team for all the holiday decorations and things up. It looks great. I know you guys have uh, all sorts of things to deal with all, all the time. So to take the time out and make the town so pretty and all the folk have helped you out. So thank you.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Okay, um, I only have one thing, which is I'm going to Costa Rica. So I'll be gone for a week, back on the eighth.
Ooh. I get to play. Realize everything.
Yeah. Or come back and won't be recognizable here.
When are you leaving?
Five o'clock on Thursday morning.
Oh, the eighth of December. Okay. That was like a month. Wow.
Short little trip. Yeah. Okay, um, so um, we are going, there isn't anything in the information only section, right?
Uh, there was a car.
Yeah, that's, oh, the car from, yeah, the Montessori school. So we are going to um, go into executive session and uh, after we, after we take a, like a five minute break. And I will need somebody to make a motion to go into the executive session. Um, what the motion should say is that I move that the board of trustees enter into executive session to hold a conference with the town's attorney to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to C R S twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B concerning regulating tree pruning and destruction on private property. So would someone make that motion? I still move. Okay. And is there a second?
Second.
So we have Cobb and um, Swisher, um, all in favor of going into the executive session. Anybody want to post?